Council Agenda, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Regular Township Council Meeting of November 24th, 2020. Introduction, Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 18th, 2019, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on December 23rd, 2019, and was forwarded by Fax, other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2019. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM, Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing on www.parsippany.net. Okay, may I, if I can, ask you to lead us in the flaxaloo, please?
My pleasure, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now we're going to go into roll call. Mr. Carriffy?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney Jim Lott, and the CFO Juan Uribe. Council President, we have a quorum, may I begin?
I also see Ed Snikus here.
Yes, there, we have Ed Snikus, Mike Hanley, and Susan Favante, they're here for the closed session.
Okay, thank you.
May I begin?
Please.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, December 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM, Agenda Meeting, December 15th at 7:00 PM, the regular meeting. Approval of minutes, we have the Agenda Meeting of October 6th, 2020, the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020, and the special meeting of September 9th, 2020. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy? Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson? Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Now going to Presentations and Reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I want to start off by saying first that I'm hoping that everyone that can hear me right now has a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Certainly, I know myself and my family, we have a lot to be thankful for this year. And I know that it's been hard and challenging for everyone in Parsippany in one way or another. And that I'm... In my household, we're taking the precautions necessary to make sure we have a better and more normal Thanksgiving next year. We're willing to make that sacrifice, and I'm hoping everyone that can hear me is doing the same. I'll tell you what the township is very thankful for. We're thankful for the 450 employees that work for the township. We're thankful for the Board of Education staff and members as well, and the parents that are working hard to educate their children. We're also very thankful for the volunteers and professionals that protect this town. And also the volunteers that are just giving so much of themselves this year, not just because it's Thanksgiving with Christmas around the corner, but have been doing it all year to help care for people, to help feed people, to help people get to appointments and to keep themselves healthy. Just that volunteer spirit, that community spirit gives me hope. And when there's so much, so many grim things happening right now, that makes me smile and makes me look forward to a brighter future. So, that's what this township is thankful for. So, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. With that, this Saturday is Small Business Saturday. Everyone focuses on Black Friday where they wind up getting, you know, deals at the mall and deals digital, but I want people to focus on local. So I'd like to read this proclamation for Small Business Saturday and for the record. Whereas the administration of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 300.7 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small business employs 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of US small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of US small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And 3/4 of US consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping small that shopping small would have a positive social and economic environmental impact. And 90% of consumers who shops on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills supports our local businesses that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I, Michael A. Soriano, Mayor of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you very much, Clerk. Mr. Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving on to Township Council, I turn it over to the Council President.
Well, I do have two items I would like to bring up. One is an email that we received from Adam Verillo, a resident in Rainbow Lakes area. He's concerned that a developer will be tearing down the Zeroth Restaurant and replacing it with a motel and a gas station. His concern is that this new facility will have entrance and exit from Fox Hill Road, which is already a very heavily traveled road, especially near the 46 traffic light. So, I remember very vividly when we were considering the Whole Foods development, we had 30, 40, and sometimes 50 members from Mountain Lakes coming to our meetings and stating their opposition. I'm just wondering if it's time now for Parsippany to stand in and voice our position to Mountain Lakes Planning Board, which is considering this application with access to Fox Hill Road. Food for thought, if anyone wants some feedback, that's it. Their next meeting is December 17th, the Mountain Lakes Planning Board, December 17th. Mayor, shouldn't we have some representation there to voice our objection for Rainbow Lakes?
Well, first of all, Michael, if I recall, I paid very close attention to the Waterview situation. That was not the Township of Parsippany. I mean, sorry, that was not the Township of Mountain Lakes coming to the planning board. That was individual citizens. And I also note that the volunteers and the activists that formed their group, which were Mountain Lakes people and Parsippany folk, also got their own engineer to do an assessment. And, you know, I know that there's a vocal group that's formulating, forming in the Rainbow Lakes area. You know, I would, I'm curious what they're doing with that, if anything. I had myself had planned to go to the planning board meeting last week, but it got pulled from the agenda because I did want to voice concerns on behalf of residents who've been calling me. You know, I certainly don't think, you know, we could halt the project, but certainly voicing concerns about traffic that goes onto Fox Hill Road, I think is something that as a township, I am going to myself speak about. But going township against township, I'm not sure we're ready for that.
I was not proposing township against township. I just think that individuals should be involved.
Well...
I'll be attending that meeting too if I can make the 17th.
I would say individuals being involved in government and in a discussion on how communities can be done is a very American thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the Knoll Country Club is going to have a rate increase in 2021. And they had sent out a notice that any members who pay their membership, their 2021 membership fees in advance during 2020 will pay the 2020 rate, not the 2021 rate, which is a good deal, and a lot of checks are going in. But unfortunately, I got a phone call from one of the members who said that his check balance came back. The post office sent it back and said it was not deliverable. Do we have a problem with our post office box in Parsippany? Anybody?
Council President, I can answer that. It's the Knolls, it's the Knolls PO box. You know, so obviously with the COVID and all this, they, the post office kept sending the notice not to the Knoll that their post office, you know, why didn't they just put the notice in the PO box that was supposed to be closed? And we have fast-tracked a check to the Knoll to reopen their PO box.
Okay, alright.
It's not, it's a Knoll bill, not a Parsippany, not a township bill.
And where did they send the notice, or they didn't?
We don't know. Because if it had showed up here, we'd have done something about it, or we'd just put it in the mailbox to go out through the Knoll. But we had told Kevin, I see Kevin all the time, talk to him all the time. We found out about it when, you know, the mail, like you said, your correspondence to the Knoll kept getting kicked back by the members as part of the renewal. And that's when we found out that the mailbox had lapsed, the payment had lapsed.
Did we take steps to correct the procedure from the post office in the future?
It's the post office, as you know, has their own rules, and Kevin's just gonna have to keep an eye on the mailbox.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. DePiero, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Certainly.
Thank you. Uh, no, maybe, but I don't think so. I'm wondering if we can get an update on the cases of COVID-19 that have been reported from Town Hall, please? Last time we spoke, there were six cases on the first floor.
I can address that during my report, ma'am?
Um, will I have the opportunity to ask you follow-up questions after that report?
No. Yes. Yes, yes, I was going to talk township-wide, and we can talk about our status and what we're doing here in Town Hall.
Then I'll hold my questions for then, thank you.
Any other member from the Township Council?
Yes, Loretta Grignani. I too have some questions on our COVID procedures. And if Ray Carr is going to be addressing them, I will alter until he speaks.
Okay, thank you. Any other member from Council with any other things that they'd like to address or speak about? Okay, seeing none, moving along, Township Attorney? Jim? You're on mute. Township Attorney, yeah, there you go.
Let me try that again, I have no report.
Just the items for closed session, right?
That's correct, just the items for closed session as indicated on the agenda.
Perfect, Mr. Lott. Okay, next up, Business Administrator Fred Carr?
Thank you, Council. So I will swing in, if I may, to the COVID update, which I was planning on anyhow. So right now, let's talk about in Parsippany Troy Hills, right now, as of 12:30 today, the 24th of November, we have 1,349 lab confirmed cases of COVID in the township, of which there were 84 lab confirmed deaths, you know, in the township. That's the numbers right now. Included in those numbers are 17,158 negative COVID tests in the township. Seguing into the downstairs area, we still have a couple of employees who are out, Councilwoman. They did open for business starting last Wednesday. They came, all the employees came to work that were cleared by the Health Department. Employees who were sick or who had shown symptoms were required to stay home after the 20th. They needed to have a 24-hour period in which they were symptom-free. And there's a few of them who are still in that category of still having symptoms, they still have, you have to have 24 hours without a fever, for instance, without the use of medication, and a whole slew of those guidelines. But they are open for business downstairs. We've had some cases upstairs sporadic in other parts of the township. I classify those as, refer to those as the ripple effect of contact of employees with other employees, either by, in social gatherings or in some cases, because they live in the same household, or quarantining, and things like that. We are still, township is going to stay open. Our efforts are to maintain the open doors for the policy in spite of, in some cases, reduced manning. We don't want to get into a conversation where we have to close Township Hall and only have it for appointments only. We're going to avoid that, and starting, well, two weeks ago, many organizations are going back to the A-Team, B-Team schedule, where like the clerk's office, IT, sewer and water, some of those critical infrastructures, they're going to, you know, staying in two different teams that don't interact with each other. Other groups, for instance, in Parks and Forestry, they stagger their, they've staggered their times when they come in to work so that they all don't rush the time clock at the same time. And that's showing where we are right now. If you have any questions other than that, I can address specifics if you like, without names.
We do, yes, I do. Loretta, would you like to go first?
Thank you. BA, I know we had several cases on the main level in Town Hall. And one particular young lady, I thought was very brave to post on Facebook that she was positive, and if anyone had been in her company, to please be tested. That was on the 18th. I'm under the impression that we're supposed to have a two-week session where they have to be COVID-free for two weeks and then take another test before they come into work? Or am I under the impression that I'm not correct? This woman came back on the 23rd. She's not even out a week.
Okay, her, so in my conversation with Carlo, the health officer who makes those determinations, Councilwoman, her onset of her COVID symptoms, when she took her test, okay, so she was tested, she had some symptoms they thought were COVID symptoms, and she was put out for the required amount of time based on the Health Department. So she came back based on the contact tracing and the conversations that she specifically had with the Health Department, just like every other employee who returns to work, that return to work day is determined by the Health Department.
So then we're not, we're not doing a two-week layoff or two weeks staying home? So that's...
It depends on when the two weeks starts, Councilwoman.
Well, if, let's say she started two days before, which is the 16th.
It was not the 16th, ma'am, it was the week before.
So she tested positive on the 18th. We're setting symptoms on the 9th. Did she say she had symptoms on the 9th, or no? See, that's what I'm a little confused about, okay? I don't understand why she wasn't home for the two weeks. That's that case.
She was home.
Now we need to be careful with HIPAA laws and a rice notice.
Fine.
We need to be careful.
This employee has placed it out in the public for the public to see, and that is her choice. I am uncomfortable talking about people's medical conditions in an open chat.
Okay, fine.
I will tell you, I will tell you that her return to work, her return to work was strictly controlled by an analysis of the Health Department.
Okay, all right, let's talk about something else, please.
And frankly, they would not have allowed her to come back to work if there was any doubt in their mind.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. Are we taking the temperatures of our employees before they come into work?
No, ma'am. We are practicing, we are practicing self-evaluation.
But we have an executive order that said the temperatures should be taken.
It doesn't say that, ma'am, it says one, there's three or four different techniques of doing that. Temperature taking would be one of them, self-evaluation is one of the options.
There's also a self-assessment form. Are they filling that out before they come to work?
No, ma'am, that's an individual thing.
Well, when is the town going to start doing some of these things to protect not only the residents that are coming into Township headquarters, but also our, our employees?
The residents, residents are protected because there's no contact between, you know, when you come in to pay your water bill or your sewer tax bill, you know, there's a physical screen between you and the employees. There's very much interaction in Town Hall with employees themselves. Employees are stepping in at work levels, you go to the clerk's office to get something there, you're talking through, you're talking through a screen.
Yes, I realize that. But I don't, I don't understand, we close downstairs because of cases. We have cases on the main level, and yet we're not closing. If the residents need some assistance, they could always make a telephone call so that you could have, they could have an appointment, or they can email, or we could have drop boxes outside for them to pay their taxes or their water bills.
We have that now. We've always had a water, we've always had a drop box outside.
Yes, my husband, my husband utilized that, yes.
Even before COVID, there was.
I'm well aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
The bathrooms that are being used by our employees, how often are they being cleaned?
Every day.
When, daily? Well, what if it's a couple of hours? Because residents, but why not, sir? When the recreation fields wanted their bathrooms to be cleaned, the residents were complaining about the bathrooms. We had somebody from Parks and Forestry every two hours, yes, they were paid overtime, to clean the bathrooms. We have men and women using the same bathroom. The knob is not being cleaned, the bathroom is not being cleaned until possibly the end of the day. I don't, I don't see where, we are helping our employees in that, in that instance. And I don't understand why we're not closing. We did it downstairs, and I don't see why we're not taking that precaution of closing upstairs. When the mayor made his last community update on November 17th, he said the cases in one week were 116. It is now the 24th. I don't know how many more cases we have. The numbers you gave us of 1,300 and change, I believe that was, or 1,800 and change, were the numbers that were given to us by Carlo, and so were the deaths. I'm hoping that we don't have any deaths since Carlo gave us that information. I'm just a little concerned.
The information I gave you tonight, ma'am, I got from Carlo today.
But those, that's the same, that's the 84 deaths he gave us last time that he spoke with us.
Yes, ma'am.
The township.
Correct.
So then we don't have any more deaths, which I'm very, I'm very happy to hear that. But I think that we have employees that are concerned, that are worried. They have underlying conditions, some of them, some of them very serious underlying conditions. And they're living with spouses, companions, that are working in town. How much contact tracing are we doing to make sure that everyone in the departments that they're working at or in are being tested and told to go take tested, to go be tested? I just, I think for the safety of our township and our residents and our employees, close the building, clean it completely. The last time it was cleaned, I understand, was possibly the 19th, when they came in and did a complete cleaning. I don't know whether another one has been done, okay? But this, this is important. We are...
They cleaned it, they cleaned it Friday night. They cleaned it, they cleaned it so that the building is clean, there's a cleaning crew, and it was sanitized, soup to nuts, just last week. They raised, they chased everybody, myself, Juan, out of the building and fogged the entire building. The first floor was closed because it met what was classified by the Health Department as an outbreak criteria, okay? Because more than one person in that area had come up positive, and so they locked, the Health Department quarantined or locked down the downstairs, okay, because of more than one case. Okay, so I talked to Carlo, and we talk about COVID, about our protections and what we do here to protect our employees and our residents, all the time. I've been on the phone with him today, I was talking to him yesterday morning, at 8 o'clock in the morning about COVID possibilities and people who are concerned, and there are protocols for that.
Well, I'm just, I feel very strongly. We're telling employees we can't see each other because of the detriment of this virus, but yet having residents come into our, our offices. I think we, personally, I think the office should be closed, not to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Peterson?
So just to share with you some of my experience in the corporate world, right now, we have all hands on deck Town Hall meetings, and any reported case of COVID in any one of our business units is treated as a disaster, as a, the word today was, I think they said, nuclear meltdown, for one case. There's a certain cavalierness that's coming across in the lack of defenses around our own employees that I find problematic because Mayor Soriano opened this meeting by thanking the 450 employees for their work for the town. And I think that it is our responsibility not to just prove ourselves with words, but with deeds. The optics are terrible, and we are modeling the behavior that we want to see in the residents of this town. So if we are cavalier, then we can expect the residents will also decide 10 days, 14 days, five days. I don't know about this Facebook situation. What I do know is that the CDC has set forth extraordinarily clear guidelines that if you have no symptoms, even if you're positive, you're quarantined for 10 days. If you have symptoms, you're quarantined for 10 days from the onset of your symptoms and fever-free for 24 hours without the aid of medication, as Mr. Carr said. And, most importantly, if you have been around a person who has tested positive, you are to be quarantined for 14 days. That means any person who was sitting in an office, masked or not, should be quarantined for 14 days. And I don't, I don't feel confident, and I can hear in Loretta's statements, she... And I don't, I don't feel confident and I can hear in Loretta's statements, she also does not feel confident that those three nationally mandated steps have not been taken. And so we're asking you to reevaluate your protocols to bring a sense of safety rather than, you know, we had a ripple effect. To me, that's a, that's a soundbite that could come back to haunt this town. It's not a ripple effect, it's community outbreak. And I would urge the people who are in the position to make these kinds of decisions. You may decide the building should stay open, but the public, has the public been notified? Is there a sign on the door? Do people have all of the information that they need to make a decision that they're going to take home to their families? And we know that people are going to travel for Thanksgiving, so they're going to take it to their loved ones. Because the cavalierness with which we've all approached this virus is what spreads this virus. And I think that Mrs. Scogani and I are in agreement that the reaction of this town has been underwhelming. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. And I will, I hear you and I will respectfully disagree. Because every single, when I talk about the ripple effect, I don't talk about it in a cavalier. It's like when employee catches it and they get it to that other person. Those people who are in contact with the contact tracing at the, at the, at the heart of what we do there with the health officer and the, and the nurses and the contact tracing. Every single employee who was in contact was interviewed by the health department with this lady and who put her name on the Facebook.
But I don't, that's not, to me, that's not good enough. There are national mandates in place. We're not in a position to be making those decisions.
I don't make those decisions, Council. And the health officer, the, the person who, is the, the man who tasked by the Department of Health at the state of New Jersey, who follows like a 96-page guideline of contacting people and calling people who have contact or has close contact or probable contact with whomever. They make all these phone calls and they're in constant contact with me and they're saying, this person has to stay home because they were possibly close to this person.
Were the people, the person who posted on Facebook? Were the people who that person shares an office space with quarantined at home for 14 days following that person's positive test result?
One person was, the other person was in Florida. So there's no close contact with the person that could be possibly close to that one person who posted because they were in another, you know, seven states.
I hope that your confidence proves right. Thank you.
I, you know, I can only control what's in this building, ma'am. Not what happens outside. You know, people get sick and we try very hard to track down each and every person who's possibly close to, you know, somebody who's either positive or presumed to be positive. And that's done, I have no, have no doubt, I have utmost confidence in Carlo and his team because they're on this, on the weekend, we're having conversations and emails, we're calling each other on the weekend, talking about this guy's, you know, positive, this person's not positive, we think this person's positive. We get the lab results from the individual employees and then we run it to ground.
There's a gap that needs to be closed because the staff who works in that building do not share that confidence. So there's a culture and a missing piece of communicating that the staff is safe. There's some, there's a cultural piece that's missing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to respond, um, if I may. Um, first of all, once, when that case happened, the ones that were downstairs in the construction area, what wound up getting as a response is that what we're, we're at now, where we are in A and B, work pods, okay? To separate people, to say that we did not do anything, that's a, that's a bit of an exaggeration. We are keeping the employees away from each other, number one. And number two, the most effective measure for the prevention of COVID-19 is wearing a mask. And that is something that is strictly enforced in this building. Now, the other thing, and as the, the, the VA mentioned, is that we have put shields up between the offices where the public interacts with township employees. So the township, the uh, the, the, the residents that come in have absolutely no physical contact and are not even, you know, have no, no possibility of spitting any vapor into employees and vice versa. So that's, that, that, that's a thing right there. I, I will um, uh, also like to add that the HVAC systems that we have here, okay, which, which have, which do have filters on them now, um, special filters for this. There are two separate systems. The upstairs has a separate system from downstairs that do not interconnect. That's, that's something that really needs to be kept in mind. Okay, so quite, quite frankly, as long as employees are wearing their masks, which they are, I'm confident that we're gonna, where that we can be safe here from this point forward. Um, especially now that we're going through As and Bs. And I will tell you that the um, this case that happened, these cases that happened downstairs have made people far more cognizant. It's been a lot easier for me to tell people, uh, please keep your mask on because they're keeping it on now. They're not, they don't need to be reminded, they don't need daddy, you know, getting in their case, making sure that they're behaving, so. Um, right now, we can bring Carlo back again next week. I do hesitate to, to keep bringing him in on nights if you have more questions for him. Because I, I certainly see and I understand the concern that the two council members have and how they brought it up. I, I hear it in their voices. If you want us to bring him next week, just please say so and uh, we'll, 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 we'll be happy to oblige that.
If uh, if I may say something, this is Councilman Corriffy. Uh, Fred, if um, you may be doing this already. But I know some uh corporations and stuff for bringing employees in, they're splitting the employees up into two groups where one uh, maybe half of one particular unit or division will come in Monday through Friday. The other half will be off working from at home that week. And then the, the next week, the other group would come in.
Oh, that's what we're doing.
That's, that's what the mayor was just talking about.
Yes, and, okay, so that's what you're doing with these deposits, the A and the B?
Yes, that's correct.
Cause that would technically, that gives them now nine days that they're not in town hall.
Correct.
Okay. And that's what we're doing for everyone at town hall, all, all these sections. Okay, thank you.
We've done that individually and in fact, the police have actually changed their schedules from a four on, four off to a four and eight.
Yes, I know, they did that last time.
And, and we're, and one of the challenges we have, Council, is that when you divide someone like, I'll pick on the clerk's office, okay? Cause he's there. If you divide the clerk into Team A and Team B and one of the members of the team gets sick, right? We resist extremely, it becomes difficult to then man that division with somebody already down because they've, they've come up positive or something has happened that has nothing to do with COVID. As I have said from day one, there are a lot, people get sick every day and have nothing to do with COVID. That then puts a strain uh, and the temptation then it becomes, well, let's cross level the bubbles. Let's cross level the teams to try to, you know, be more reactive and, and especially in construction, for instance, you have some people who are out, you try to, you have to avoid cross leveling the, the, the teams because all you'll do is cross contam, you think of, you increase your chance of cross contamination. Alright? So when we went through the bubbles of the A and B, we've held the line on not just frankly sucking it up when somebody's missing and we're just following behind in some instances uh because they're sick. We had a lady in upstairs, you know, lots of people were quarantined because of their close contact with, not because of somebody they work with, but because somebody at home has it. So we've had some people upstairs who were quarantined for 14 days and change, never came down with it. Uh, but they were with somebody, they lived with somebody who, who tested positive. We forbid them to come to work until they've been cleared by the health department.
Right.
You know, which really, really puts a challenge on, on that department.
BA Carr, um, Scogani, are we doing A and B for the entire town or just certain departments?
So the departments and the directors were allowed by me. Okay, we're not, I didn't, I'm not gonna sit there and say everybody's gonna mandatory go to A and B. You manage your workload, you manage your people, you do an evaluation. Uh, for instance, as I mentioned before, Parks and Forestry doesn't have to do A and B. They all work outside. Their close contact opportunity is in the morning and the evening when they check in and check out. That's their biggest danger. If you stagger the times that they come in, you, you're leaving them back and then they can still do their work. If we get to a point where they have to just flat out through the day, you know, week on, week off like we did in the spring, then we'll do that. But allows for the departments and the divisions to, will be way without a mandatory effective this day, this is what we're doing. We also have not canceled leaves, passes and vacations. If somebody has the ability to let somebody go and takes a vacation day, take a personal day uh and they can get their work done in spite of the A and the B schedule, then we're allowing that also. But it's a case by case basis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just, this is Janice McCarthy. Can I just ask, is the public aware that these cases, uh, when they come into the building, that there are, there are, were individuals who contracted COVID?
Yes, ma'am. So for the two weeks or the two and a half weeks that uh, that the construction department or the first floor was down, there were, there were signs on each door and on the website saying that due to COVID-19, uh, the department is closed.
I mean upstairs or that?
Yes, ma'am, every door coming into town hall, there was a sign, when you came in the door, it says, you know, downstairs is closed due to COVID. Uh, downstairs into the, into the uh, the, the outside door that just goes by the construction window, there was a sign there. And there was a sign on the door, you know, when you go from the first, second floor downstairs down from uh, by the council chambers, that door was closed, the lights were turned off. Uh, and there was a sign posted on that door that says, you know, the construction zoning and planning department is closed due to COVID.
Let me ask if you're, if they're uh not allowed to use, you know, community type coffee rooms or has that been stopped?
We only, we only have one. And uh, for the two weeks that they were gone, the only person down there using it was me.
You're brave.
No, they uh, I have, the, 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 the team, the cleaning team came in dressed as Ghostbusters on, on that Thursday. And uh, and, and totally sanitized this building soup to nuts uh, the day after we closed the building. I'm not brave, I'm just cautious. And I wash my hands a lot, I, I put so much hand sanitizer on, it's starting to crack.
You know, I think the concern for, for everyone is that this thing is expected to get worse. So I guess we have to have some fight and a sense of, of now, so.
Yeah, so I, so we're, you know, we've, the, the proactive steps we took two weeks ago to protect our employees is why we went back to the A and B. Uh, and that we are working our A and B schedules and in our conversations with all the department heads and directors uh is that, is that conversation about how do we continue to maintain the essential functions of government while keeping the building and protecting everybody all at the same time? It's a delicate balance.
Is it possible to uh make it by appointment only? If anyone has to come to town hall for a business that they, they must absolutely come to town hall? Can we make it that they have to make an appointment ahead of time so that the employees know exactly who is coming into the building and for what reason?
We would do that to close the town hall. That would be absolutely mandatory as we did in the spring and to most other places too. Uh, I know town halls that haven't opened all year. I think that uh, you know, to this, it's a, you, we're a public service, there are many things we have to interact with, with the public. I mean, it's easy to pay your electric bill or your water bill, excuse me, online. Uh, you wanna pay your taxes online. But if you wanna get a marriage license, you're gonna have to look at the registrar in the eye. You're gonna have to make an appointment, you're gonna have to do that. Uh, there are some things that have to be done uh, backed by a required on person. And we could do that if we have to lock the building, but I don't think we're there yet. Uh, if you look at the water plant, the sewer plant, Councilor, that, you know, my concern is that if, if, you know, to redivide it wholly on in the conversation so that if somebody gets sick, that the water plant still functions, that the sewer plant still functions. You know, frankly, if somebody is quarantined, the laborer, okay? And we can, we can adjust to that. That's, that's, that's serious for that individual, that individual uh stays at home and quarantines and somebody else has to run at the back of the trash truck or cut the grass. If one of those, you know, if the person who's actually running the water plant on the SCADA system goes down, we're in a lot of trouble. So we have, we've probably gone overboard in those in some of these departments. We're trying to, we're trying to protect all these and the essential functions because at the end of the day, these things still have to be done.
I, I think we've been, death. Just, just one more thing, if I may. The numbers you, you read off on Carlos, those are since March. I'm more interested in what's happened in the last month or the last two weeks. Are we getting better, are we getting worse? Uh, and that's, now instead of the big number from March all the time that we keep hearing. Is that possible? We got a, a more recent number?
What, like a weekly average? We got about 20 a day as our, as our, I can come up, I'll ask Carlo to come up with a weekly average or last.
I, we, you know, doesn't have, they're just something recent so that we can just see if we're going, getting better or worse.
I will tell you, we're getting, we're, we're, we've uh, we've sort of plateaued. The mayor can disagree, but we've plateaued at about 20, 25 positive cases a day.
That's a lot.
Like the last two weeks, absolutely, sir, it is a lot. It is a lot. But we're trending along with the rest of the state and the national average. Uh, and especially here and it's, there's a wide spectrum previous in the spring. Uh, there was uh, the, the shift was uh, older Americans, I use the term loosely, uh, between you and I. The shift now is, that curve is younger.
You know, that information, that information to me is more useful than a big number from March.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, you know, that's just for me watching the governor, watching the news and reading the newspaper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member from council? Okay, moving along. Township clerk, I don't have a report. Township offices and committees? Nothing okay?
The only committee that met was the uh Craftsman Farms virtual meeting um, to talk about the projects up at the farm and, and the tree that fell down and damaged one of their buildings. Uh, but other than that, we, uh, none of the committees I'm involved with have had any meetings.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, moving along to correspondence, none. Uh, going on to bids taken, October 1st, 2020, yard waste, transportation, disposable recycling. October 7th, 2020, third party billing for ambulance services for EMS. October 15th, 2020, uh SCADA system improvements, phase two. October 21st, 2020, well drilling and installation services, replacement production well, 21-r rebid. To be taken, November 18th, 2020, no recreation sanitary sewer improvements. Quotation proposal qualifications, none. Uh, moving on to public hearing, can I get a motion to open up the public hearing, please?
Motion?
Thank you.
Motion made by uh Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Corriffy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Scogani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, uh, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and open the floor to the public. I just want to remind the public that you will have five minutes to speak. There's a raise hand function, if you can utilize that, we will unmute you. Uh, you will have five minutes to say whatever you'd like and then we'll have the council or administration address your questions or concerns. I just want to remind the public and the administration and council, this is not a back and forth. So we're going to allow the public to speak and then we will either address them individually or collectively if they have a collective concern. With that being said, let's take a look at the participants here. Okay, looks like there is a Ken Dolsky who has his hand raised. Let's go ahead and unmute Ken, please.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive. Uh, I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to thank um councilwomen Greg Nanny and Peterson for their, uh, you know, for their, you know, diligent probing questions on, on how the pandemic has been handled in the town. I really appreciate it. I especially appreciated Ms. Greg Nanny's persistence and her drilling down into, into these details. Two comments. One, given that we are in the second wave and the prediction is things are going to get worse, not better for the next couple of months, I do think it's kind of risky to rely on, you know, personal observations or, you know, personal handling of, you know, people reporting symptoms or, you know, people deciding, you know, if they want to fill out a form or not, or take a temperature or not, or whatever it is. I don't like to, you know, I don't like, you know, to have a lot of control over people. But we can see what's going, what's going on in this country in general. I mean, the CDC said, don't travel. Immediately, 2 million people got on airplanes to travel for Thanksgiving. And so maybe 90% of our employees, 95% are to be very diligent. But we're probably not going to have 100% diligence. The fact is, people even with, you know, whatever processes we're using are getting sick. They're being exposed, whether they're trying to take protection or not. I really think the town needs to take every measure it possibly can, especially during this, you know, winter period to test people and, and make sure that we're not relying on people guessing as to how they're doing. Second thing, and I mentioned this back in, I forget whether it was April, May. I think the town needs to take, now the town needs to have an accurate, is that, well, accurate is a questionable term when it comes to COVID because of all the issues regarding tests and when the tests are taken and when the tests are reported. But you should have daily, if not, you know, to every, the count or every two or three days to see what's going on and to see if there's any opportunities for you to do anything to improve the situation. If you were down to like one or two per day and that was the average going on for a while, I could see, you know, not checking it that, that closely. But we're sitting on a bonfire here. I mean, maybe we've got 2% or 3% of the people in town that have, you know, tested positively. So you've got a lot of people that still are potential, you know, potential for, for catching this. I strongly urge you to take a look at the, at the numbers very closely every day if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Let's go ahead and mute Ken.
Can I just, this is Janice McCarthy. Can I just say, do we have a testing capability? You know, any fast test capability yet or are we planning on getting that ability to test? Anyone? Anyone?
Council president?
I asked that question, Carlos, the last time he was here. His response to me was that the county takes care of that, they don't do it locally.
So that means that there is no rapid test available? Or will become available? I understood that that was supposed to become available generally. But we don't have that, right?
The last time we spoke to Carlos, they did not have that ability. Maybe we need an update.
Yeah, I was just going to say, can we get an update on that and see if that's?
So what we'll do is we'll request Carlos' appearance at the next meeting, which will be next week.
If, if he just gives us a report through Fred, what would be sufficient for me? I don't think we need to see him, force him to come to a meeting.
That is, Ken with you?
Question is, the question is, what the, what the testing ability that's could be, that's more readily available now, is, is our health department doing any testing or do they plan to do any testing? That's a, that's a question that Fred can ask directly. I think that's what we want to know.
Okay, council president, that's a, a good suggestion. Fred, are you okay with that?
I'll ask Carlo. I mean, when we have people, we send them to their doctors. We don't send them to a central, you know, testing facility, you know, like you saw that in Garden State Parkway, a Garden State Art Center or, you know, some building like that where an employee feels that they possibly have the letter we send out to everybody, if you feel bad, you think you're, you think you're, um, and access somebody who has COVID positive, you need to contact your family doctor, your healthcare professional, talk to him, get his advice on whether or not you should be tested or not or what, what he thinks. And if they don't have that, we send them down to, you know, to the, to the clinic and they get tested. But I'll ask if, I have not heard from my conversation with Carlo if Morris County is setting up a testing facility, you know, at a certain period of time or anything like that.
We had a county testing facility that was operating for quite some time in Randolph. And for whatever reason, the county shut down. I, I, I don't know why, but that was a valuable resource. Testing, testing is not something that's done on the municipal level in the state at this point. It's, it's coordinated by county health officers.
But I will ask Carlo that specific question.
I understand is that the county shut down the testing site because the cases came much more under control. Now that we have spiked again, they have to re-mobilize everything. My, I got an email from Atlantic Health, there's an opportunity to get tested on, at the urgent care on Route 46 in Mountain Lakes that shares the office building with Bright Horizons. And you, but you have to have symptoms, which is another change. Same with Rite Aid on Lake High, in Lake High, I believe it had been, you could just go and get tested. I had to get tested multiple times in order to report to work and accounts in the city. Now I believe in order to get an appointment, you have to be showing symptoms, which is going to dramatically slow down the recovery to the point where we could, I, I, I would imagine the county is going to reopen in that testing site within days.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Thank you, mayor. All right, let's now take a look at the public participants to see, to see if we have anyone that has a hand raised. I don't see anyone. I'll give you another minute and then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, oh, okay, it looks like we have, hold on, no. Let's see here. Okay, we do have someone. A Mr. Or, it's a Ramakumar Sridharth, so let's please unmute him. Hello?
Hi.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name, I do apologize in advance.
No, that's okay. My name is Ram Sridharth and I live in 4 Autumn Ridge Road, Morris Plains. He's part of the Glenmont Common Association. I'm, I'm here, first, first of all, I thank, you know, the council members and the mayor for giving me an opportunity to, to speak at this, this meeting. And I'm here because last time, our, many of our residents came here and presented about, about, about the condition of our roads. And one of the things that we heard first time is the township does not have possession of the roads after the construction of our community has been completed. So one of the things we have done is we've also raised an Oprah request as part of our community. But at the same time, I just wanted to understand because I thought this would be a, a normal process where once the construction is over, the roads are handed over to the township. But we have raised this condition about the roads almost a few months now. And we, we are just wondering why the roads are not in the position of the township. Just wanted to bring this up and, you know, many of our township has about, sorry, our area has about a few hundred houses that are impacted by these roads. So many of our residents share similar concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Would any member of the administration or council like to address this member of the public? Okay, moving on.
Wait, hold, hold on. Fred, you, you want to explain that to Mr. Ramkumar?
I would, I would, I would, I think now is an opportunity for Mr. Lot to practice law. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Lot.
Mr. Carr and I and Engineer Liza have been talking about this. So we've taken a look at some of the documents and we're, we're currently examining what, why the roads have not been, have not been offered for dedication. We, we needed to pull a series of documents, some of which go back, you know, over 20 years. And we're currently taking a, a look at those plans, approvals and, and agreements.
Thank you, Jim. All right, next we have Vamsi Pundla. Can we please unmute? Hello?
Hello, hi, evening and thank you for giving me the time. I'm Vamsi Pundla, I'm a resident of Greater Glenmont Commons. I'm a neighbor of Ramkumar. I want to bring two items to the council and administration's attention. The first one is the same thing with, as roads. We found that all the sewer lines that were constructed for the, in the old Dover Road for the new construction going on there, they were not paved well, that entire area is full of potholes. And we can continue and the same thing as Ram said, the, the same, the situation in the Summer Hill Drive, Seasons Glen, Autumn Ridge Drive and Spring Hill Drive are also in the same situation. They were very hazardous for our residents and also for the emergency vehicles. And on the same thing as, on the roads, some of the stormwater drain grates are in very, very bad condition. The township placed some safety cones about a year back. Even the, the safety cones are now as bad as the grates. So we would require an attention on this topic. The second one, which is about the administration promised, Mr. Mayor, you promised that you will acquire the land for the Master Sergeant Jimmy Vigilante Memorial Park. It's a long time dream for all the residents and for, for our kids and our seniors. The groundbreaking was done before the land was acquired, which I believe you were also there. I understand you were not in the government at the time, but just before an election weekend that happened. Then finally, you took administration from, you took office from January 2018. And what are the steps that are taken after that, after you took office to help with this condition? And again, I'm respectfully asking not just you as an administration and also several constructions were approved for the same builder in the community, in the, in the, in the township. Without having these kind of leverages that the township has, why are you allowing additional construction to happen from the same builder? When, you know, unmet promised, promises were there. And finally, that area, why we are concerned about that, about that area is it's full of overgrown, overgrown grass. It's a perfect camouflage for the wildlife and it's putting our children's at risk because that's an area where several of our kids will move from the lower parts of the community into the single family homeside where they have friends. Often after 7:00 or 8:00 PM, the kids will be walking alone. It's very dangerous if you can come over that side and see in the evening. I request attention for these two items and also hopefully I'll get an answer for the second question. Finally, belated Diwali wishes and happy Thanksgiving for you and your families. God bless America, be safe.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I ask if the administration or council would like to respond to this gentleman?
I, I would like to respond to Mr. Pundla. Mr. Pundla, when the groundbreaking happened for the park that we wanted to name after our departed council member Jimmy Vigilante, you know, this was a wonderful gift we saw that the developer wanted to give to the township. And we looked into the land. We saw the history of the land after a, a very extensive search and were concerned. So we asked to take a soil sample of the land. I mean, if we're going to build a children's playground there, I want to make sure the land's not contaminated. I want to make sure it's not, wasn't a dumping site and we're not going to create a sinkhole where we're going to have children playing on a playground and people walking. So we politely asked the developer who was, wanted to donate the land to us for free, if we could take a soil sample. It seemed reasonable and, and I'm sure everyone here on the council could agree with me. That's a reasonable request, say, hey, can we just take a, a soil sample? We'll pay for it. The developer said no. Take it as it is or don't take it at all. I very badly wanted to build a park there. That, that development, when it was built, for whatever reasons, there were no amenities for the residents, no sidewalks either. And not having a playground for children, just, it just seems like such a simple thing to build in the first place. Should have been done before the project was finished, I think. But I will not put our children in jeopardy and build something where I'm not 100% sure that they are not safe. As for keeping developers accountable, there are existing rules on the books. I'm going to have to actually ask Mr. Lot to help me with this part of it because, you know, he is the legal eagle around here. Can you help me explain to Mr. Pundla the difficulties that we have right now?
Sometimes the legal eagle, sometimes the legal turkey. Gobble, gobble. But we're, we're currently looking at a number of issues in, in the areas I explained before as to why, why the roads and some of the other infrastructure has not been offered to, have been offered by the, by the developer to the township for dedication. You know, the, the, the development review cycle is prescribed by, by ordinance. Many of these approvals were granted years ago. We're, we're actually, we're actually starting to take a look at a number of our ordinances as well as the development review cycle to see if we can tighten up our, 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 our current practices that allow, you know, a developer to start construction and then, and then not, not make the required dedications.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, mayor. All right, at this time, I don't see anyone else with their hand up. So I will wait about 20 seconds here. Okay. Seeing no one else, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Take a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carrify, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed. Okay, at this time, we're going to have an executive session. And for members of the public, I just want you to know that this executive session has been placed here as we need to come out and take possible action. So it shouldn't be too long and we will be back shortly thereafter, we go into executive session. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney client privilege and contract negotiations, 1515 Route 10 Standbury Amendments to Standbury Redevelopment Plan, Redevelopment Agreement, Financial Pilot Tax Exemption Agreement and the MCIA Redevelopment Bond Financing Application. And whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidential above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, the Township, precipitating Troy Hills and publicly excluding this meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Motion.
Take a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn into closed session, I just want to remind the public, when we adjourn, we are going to be temporarily signed off and then we're going to come right back on. So you guys can stay signed on if you choose to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Let's go ahead and go into executive session, please. Okay, we're now back in open session. Could I please have a motion to reconvene into open session, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session. Now moving on to ordinances, introduction. With ordinance number twenty twenty, colon thirty-two, amending and supplementing Chapter four, Administration of Government, to transfer the Division of Parks and Forestry to the Department of Public Works and establish the Department of Recreational Services. Ordinance twenty twenty, colon thirty-three, and ordinance of the Township, of the Township Council of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, authorizing the township to convey property via quick claim deed. Ordinance twenty twenty, colon thirty-four, in ordinance of the Township Council of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, amending the redevelopment plan for Block two hundred, Lot one point two and Lot one point oh three, and referring said amendment to the Planning Board for review and comment in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty-eight, colon twelve eight dash one, et cetera. Ordinance twenty twenty, colon thirty-five, ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, authorizing the execution of amended financial agreement with the District at fifteen fifteen Urban Renewal LLC and the District at fifteen fifteen Urban Renewal Two LLC granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as Block two hundred, Lot one point two and Lot one point oh three in accordance with the long-term tax exemption law NJSA forty-eight, colon twenty, dash one, et cetera, and redevelopment. Be resolved, the public ordinance is being introduced right by title and passed on first readings at the meeting of the Township Council of Precipity Troy Hills held on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and that said ordinance be further considered for second readings and final passages at a meeting to be held on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM, prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township in which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinances. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinances with the notices of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Now please have a motion.
Motion, Peterson.
Second.
Correct. Cut.
Yes.
I'm sorry, before you take the roll call vote, I have one technical correction to ordinance number two, twenty dash twenty thirty-three. That's the conveyance. It says by quick claim deed. The, the ordinance was actually amended to provide for either a quick claim deed or a bargain and sale deed. If the, if the owners are able to get a survey, it would be able to convey by bargain and sale. So we should correct the title.
Okay, so we'll say to convey a property via quick claim deed or bargain and sale deed in the event, or, 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 in the event that they get a survey, correct?
Correct. And that's, that's, that's in the, that's in the revised ordinance we had sent you on Friday. So the title can be amended to say quick claim or bargain and sale deed.
Okay, and just for the record, just so we're on the same page, the amended ordinance is what's going to appear on the mayor's desk for approval. So just so we're on the same page, and that's what the council is voting on tonight.
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, so with that being said, thank you, Jim, for the correction. With that being said, we had a motion by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Corriffy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? Ms. Grignani?
Yes, this is to the straw poll that, so I'm going to be saying no to this.
Well, you're going to say, so what you're going to do is you will vote, you will vote yes to twenty twenty thirty-two and twenty twenty thirty-three, but you will be voting no to twenty twenty thirty-four and twenty twenty thirty-five, Ms. Grignani.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Grignani, we have Ms. McCarthy. I'm assuming it's going to be the same, same matter. Will you be voting yes on twenty twenty thirty-two and twenty twenty thirty-three and no on twenty twenty thirty-four and twenty twenty thirty-five?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Yes, just to clarify this, we just went to all four ordinances. And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Same thing, yes, to all four ordinances. So with that being said, we have four yes votes on ordinance twenty twenty thirty-two and twenty twenty thirty-three. And we have three yes votes on twenty twenty thirty-four, twenty twenty thirty-five, and two no votes on twenty twenty thirty-four and twenty twenty thirty-five. This is just to clarify for the record. Moving on, second reading in public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty, colon thirty, providing retirement payouts and authorizing a special emergency appropriation of six hundred and thirty-one thousand, six seventy-one. Ordinance twenty twenty, colon thirty-one, authorizing the township to acquire stormwater drainage easement on a portion of lots six, eight and nine in Block seven sixty-six. And notices for the ordinances above were published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty. The ordinances were introduced at the October twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Motion to accept the ordinances twenty twenty, colon thirty, and twenty twenty, colon thirty-one, please.
Motion.
Second. Motion. Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? I think Ms. McCarthy said yes.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing on twenty twenty, colon thirty, and twenty twenty, colon thirty-one. Motion to open the public hearing for the above ordinances.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, since there's a public hearing, I just need to look to see if there are anyone that would like, any members of the public that would like to speak on the above-mentioned ordinances. Okay, I don't see anyone. With that being said, could I please have a motion? Seeing no one, can I please have a motion? All right, motion made by Mr. Corriffy, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Peterson. Okay, roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinances be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinances be published in the newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. If you don't mind, we'll get to Ms. Grignani with this. Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes, yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions, none, going on to the consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed as listed are routine and not controversial by the Township Council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered its normal sequence on the agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the non-consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to approval of the payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment to authorize this payment of the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at one point six million dollars. And number two, payment of bills from bachelor list of November fifteenth, twenty twenty through November seventeenth, twenty twenty, which is two million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Can I please have a motion to approve the authorization for payment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Ms. McCarthy? Oh, no, roll call, Mr. Corriffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So with that being said, could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
Made by Ms. Peterson, oh, no, motion made by Mr. Corriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Grignani.
Ms. Grignani, it's Ms. Peterson, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? Peterson? And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
That being said, we are adjourned. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, and we'll see you next week.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, everyone. All right.
Go ahead, one procedural, go ahead, one procedural point?
Jim, Ken, we have to eat turkey. What are you doing? No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
The, the redevelopment plan ordinance, that needs to be referred to the Planning Board.
Yes, we will get a memo over to the Planning Board, absolutely. You're very welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.